CJS. Kind of went through that. Lee will be interested in that one. That what Troy's reading? We'll do that. Approve the minutes, we can add her in there to a little introduction. I don't know if this would be.
Well, they're going to, apparently they're playing.
This side thing stayed up pretty good on the, out of the, uh, for, uh, central building. Had a couple piles of straw there and a pen that hasn't been taken down, and otherwise it looks pretty good.
And that was supposed to be taken down next weekend already?
It's too cold.
I want to.
It's nine o'clock. All right, good morning, everyone. It is 9:00 AM. We will call this meeting of Cottontown County Board of Commissioners to order. It is Tuesday, February 16th, 2021. We'll start with our Pledge of Allegiance, and if Cindy would lead us this morning, please.
My name is Senator Fire of the United States of America, and to the one which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two, call for public comment. We will still take individuals who want to call in on any items that are not on the agenda, and this is for information only. The two numbers are 882-6248 and 882-6297, and we will address those during the open part of the meeting, and that is at the end. Item number three, conflict of interest items. Are there any for fellow commissioners?
None.
All right, item number four, action to approve the February 16th, 2021 agenda. Motion by Van Duzen, second by Gable. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that motion carries. Item number five, action to approve the minutes from the February 9th, 2021 meeting.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Waterman. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that motion carries. Myron, I will let you go ahead and introduce our new individuals.
Thank you, Brenda. I'd like to introduce Sarah House. Sarah is our new welfare director, and this is her first day on the job. She's actually officially a employee of Cottontown County now, and I invited her to come over and meet the commissioners, and she hasn't run out of the room yet, so they're all right. And I invited her to stay for the meeting if she wishes, so she could see how things occur here. But I did forewarn her that it could get kind of boring once in a while, but she's certainly welcome to see how everything trans- transitions. Anyway, Sarah has, she, I met her at the, in the office this morning, and, and we walked into her office together and turned the space heater on, so it's warming up, so maybe by noon it'll be all right in there. So, anyway, congratulations and welcome awards, Sarah.
Welcome, welcome.
Welcome. Yeah, we're looking forward to your monthly reports and moving through this process, so thank you.
Speaking of monthly reports, is it every, every second Tuesday, is that what it is?
It got changed to the second Tuesday, yes.
Second Tuesday is welfare report, yeah.
So we just had ours the last week, so give you a little time to get ready for that. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will move on then to monthly reports, and the first one is the facilities manager, and that would be Steve. Good morning, Steve.
Good morning, Steve.
Good morning, Steve. Yeah, talk about prepare weekly reports. Yep, we're going to be winging this thing this morning a little bit. In the courthouse, courthouse, some of the projects being done is a little bit of painting going on up on the second floor and some patching of some blowouts from some of the, I want to say the certain muddied areas that kind of blows out. In fact, we got a couple of them up here that needs to be repaired, too. So those are the projects that have gone on here. Rather cold, out, of course. Good thing we didn't have a lot of snow so far, so that's been a blessing. Let me think here. Haven't heard any, had a couple calls for all the detention centers so far on some, for some bids for that project going on over there. I don't know if anything is turned in yet. So, go on to, at the extension building, had the farm show this past week. I don't know if anybody went out and attended any, at anything, any event. I think I made it out there every day for just an hour or so. And I think it went pretty good. I mean, yeah, there's probably, there was a few people that came in, walked in and looking around, okay, where's the booths? Must not have got the word that it was just going to be livestock only, but I think it went pretty smoothly the way it sounds like for, for on the livestock end. There were some pretty good numbers of sales, I believe, but really well, so. Uh, the, to the weed, of course, next week, Wednesday, having the annual weed board meeting with the towns and township, and I can, you can pass that around to everybody. Those are the invitation cards and so we had, so. Um, I know that Jamie is going to speak on behalf with the towns and township, and I have to meet with Mel Reese here, probably this afternoon, a little bit, going through for their agenda, what they want, so.
Also Travis Paulson.
Oh, and Travis Paulson, he is, he's with Eden Township, but he's also on the state towns and township board. Okay, I, I can't think of anything off, otherwise offhand. Oh.
You mentioned that.
Okay, um, this, this week I'll be traveling. I got a travel request in to go to Pierre for the commission, state weed commission meeting, which is going to be held. Going out there, I assist with that, for that biocontrol project of the poison hemlock, and I assist with it, and I'm putting the presentation together for, we have to give a report on that to the state weed commission on when it, with it. So I'm doing that with Dual County, so, and he is coming here tomorrow to go finalize the presentation for that, so. Also to mention, I don't know if Brenda wants to say, but I was, she has, they were looking for a, a liaison for the, on the commission, for the state commission side. And Brenda Severs had asked me if I could ask Brenda Hanton to fill in for this year to represent the state for, on the commission side, and, and she did accept that for, it'd be for, for three meetings and so we had, until they get somebody that will step in for that position and stuff, so.
So the only thing on your travel request is you're going out the day before?
Yeah, I have, this is incorrect. I'm going out the day before, because the meeting was typically be set at 1:00, but they, here just on Friday, they sent out the agenda. It has changed to 9:00. So I'll be heading out on Wednesday, so this will be revised, and so we had for, for lodging expense, and then a little bit more for meals. We'll be taking the county car and so we had, and Brenda will be riding along with.
And my expenses are all paid, so I don't, it's no cost to the county for me to be on this.
Yep.
So, all right.
Anything, anybody got anything to ask? Oh, I will note, still working on the step issue.
I think we should close the one side off.
I don't know, it must have to do something. Right now, it seems like people are leaping over the yellow step.
Yeah, if we close.
Email, I sent an email.
Yeah, you sent the email, yep.
Maybe some ideas to talk about.
Yep.
If we close the one side off until we get it mitigated, see if that is even it. I don't know, if they start going down the other side, if that helps or not.
I have no idea. I did, I will for, Cindy did get a CC and so we had from the safety benefits, I believe, of their recommendations, so you guys did, okay. All right.
So it's a work in progress. It's just crazy that it's happening like that all of a sudden, so. All right, thanks, Steve. Yeah. All right, we'll move on then to highway superintendent with Rick. Good morning, Rick.
Good morning. Well, it's been kind of a quiet month again, which is really nice when you're with the highway department. The guys were still cutting trees until it got real cold, then they moved into the shop, and we've got numerous projects they've been working on, some old sign posts, taking stuff off and things that we can use off them. And they've gotten the crack sealer in and the air compressor, so when the weather breaks, they've still got a few more trees that we need to trim out. There's some signs and stuff that are partially covered, but they'll start crack sealing, because before the cold weather, the cracks hadn't opened up very much. And now, some of the roads have gotten them nice little heaves and stuff in it, and the cracks have opened up, so we'll get to doing that. Friday, we took those three new trucks that we got last year to Fargo to have the boxes and the pusher axles put on. It's about time. Our oil burner that we use to heat our shop has fallen apart. We'll have to replace that. That's about a $6,500 unit, but we use that. We've got three propane heaters or natural gas heaters in our shop, plus this, this is what we use mainly to heat our shop with. Because right now, the natural gas meters are just about spinning off the outside of the building, and this saves us a lot of money to heat our shop. Our other one has over 20,000 hours on it, because it, that's mainly what we heat the shop with, unless it's real cold, then we kick on the natural gas heaters. Uh, our 1951 Roscoe oil pot is about dead. We're going to have to replace that, and.
What is it?
It's a 1951 Roscoe. What we use it for is in the spring to patch our roads on the asphalt. If we have alligator cracks, blowouts, we spray MC-70 on, put P-Rock over the top, and it glues it back together. So water does not get underneath the asphalt to make the spot bigger. But like I said, it's a 1951 model.
What is, is this a piece of machinery?
Yeah, it's a trailer.
I don't know what it is.
We pull a wheel pickup.
Okay.
I wasn't an employee.
Well, you keep saying pot, pot.
It's a 1951 Roscoe oil pot.
It's like a culvert.
Okay.
It's a 600 gallon tank.
Okay.
There's an engine on the back. It's heated with, this one's heated with propane. There's a spray bar on the back. The guys, there's a trip in the front, they turn it on, sprays oil out, they get to the end of the crack, they shut it off, and we cover it up with P-Rock. And this helps bond the road back together, so we don't have extra damage, because that's, mainly we use it in the spring. But like I said, it's served its life. We might have a payment or two left on that 51. But. That's something that we're looking at replacing, because it's, we're down to only being able to heat it with half of the element. One side, there's oil leaking in, so hopefully we can use it this year, and I can find something to replace it with.
Is this something that?
Between, depending on, if you want a Cadillac, it's around $90,000 on down, so I'm trying to find something in between.
Not like the Volkswagen model.
Well, we want it the last seven years, so.
Is this something that's in the budget?
Yeah, there's.
It's in the budget?
Yep.
Yep, okay.
Yep, and that's, leads up to the next thing. Last year, the highway department returned $742,000. I'm going to need some of that money back to finish the projects that got started last year. One is the truck bodies that we delivered last week. There's almost $120,000 there. I gave you a sheet that you all should have. Yep, and then the final payment on the bridge that was replaced last year, about $167,000. And then the riprap project that's still going on, they shut down due to the cold, and that's almost $450,000. So that's roughly $635,000 that I'm going to need back, or it's going to come out of this year's budget. There's going to be things that we aren't going to be able to do, so that's what I'd like to see brought back into the budget for this year.
How does that work, the process for that, Cindy? Do we wait until the budget gets totally expended, and then we do a budget hearing sort of thing to transfer that money back in?
We have to advertise a notice of public hearing for a formal budget supplement later in the year.
So.
You know, I think the thing to do now is just kind of, you know, take a look at the numbers where they stand now, and then just understand where, where stuff is, and then if the time comes, you know, this is, you know, but good to be aware of.
Operate as, as normal.
Yeah.
And when you run out of money, then is when we have to step in, and we, we are aware now that you did turn 742,000.
Yeah, and that money would have been spent, you know, if, if we could have got everything done last year, but COVID screwed up our truck boxes. I guess I could blame COVID for our furnace and pot, too, but.
Might as well.
So the bridge, the bridge payment, we will receive some dollars back, right, on that for the?
No, no, that, that was our 20% share on the bridge that was replaced on County Road 4.
Because you said a different amount, it was 66 here, so I.
Yeah, see, and our total payment on that was, I think, $190,000 or $195,000.
Okay.
So we had 20% of that almost million dollars is what that bridge cost.
Okay.
This, this was the last payment they sent us.
Okay.
That we had to make in just last month, so.
Okay, gotcha.
And we'd already paid part of that.
Okay.
So that's why it's only 67,000, so.
Okay. All right.
I guess that's about all I have.
Now, the riprap project, that started in 20.
Yes.
And, right, Cindy? So it was, it was budgeted, it started in 20, and it's going to get completed in 21. Will it get completed in 21?
It's supposed to be done the end of this month.
Are we going to have an issue with that, because it's a ongoing project?
No, no. You pay, you should be paying as you go.
Yeah, because we've, we just made a payment to them for like $170,000.
For, you know, up to where they apparently were when they went, yeah, so.
Yeah, for material that had been hauled down and placed. They still.
Well, that wasn't even a budgeted.
No, that wasn't.
That wasn't even a budgeted project for 2020, so.
Because basically, everything that I had budgeted for last year didn't happen because of the flooding we had last spring, because we didn't have any disaster declaration, so that all came out of my budget. So I've got a lot of catching up to do this year, just to maintain, you know, our chip seal, and we've got a bunch of patching of spots that were blew out last year that have to be replaced, so.
Right, and we do, we are going to receive some compensation back on a couple of those projects, right?
That was from 2019.
Yeah.
Yeah, hopefully we, we get money back. There's, that's, one was settled on, I have, I guess we haven't seen anything back. I haven't seen anything back, because that was around $100,000. And then the other one for County Road 8 and County Road 10, that one's still in the process, so we'll see what we get back on that.
Right. Well, every little bit helps, so.
Yep.
All right.
I guess that's all I have, so.
Anyone have any other questions? Not, we will move on then to the opening of the bids for the highway supplies and weed chemicals, and then action to award those bids. We'll start with highway supplies.
Okay, first one, it's concrete pipe. This is from Chemcast. Okay, the 24 inch is $29.95.
That's first one.
Yes. This 36 is $64.50 per foot. The 60 inch is $173.85 per foot. So the last one again, $173.85 for 60 inch.
Chemcast, where?
They are out of, oh.
Should say, on top of that, she, there's.
It's, it's north of Sioux Falls and back to the west, Hartford, Hartford, that's what I was looking for. I remember off the top of my head. And this year, they did put in a bid for a concrete box culvert. Okay, the eight by eight is $618.75.
Narrow peak, huh?
$618.75 per foot.
Per foot?
Yes. Okay, the 10 by 10. Is $750 per foot.
That's all for them, huh?
Yes.
Yep, I pulled them up. Yeah, I mean, I have the minutes.
And the next one is from Fortera. They're on a rapid city is where the bid comes from. Okay, the 24 inch pipe. Is $33.36 per foot.
Are these fresh and delivered, or are they?
Yes. The 36 inch pipe is $60.96 per foot. And the 60 inch is $170.09.
Does that spell out P-O-T-A? How do you spell that?
Okay, the box culvert. The eight by eight. There's two different. $510 per foot. And the 10 by 10 is $631. And then the pre-stressed bridge deck. The 40 foot by 23 inch. And the 50. Is $7,278.
Is that also per foot?
Yes. 78? Yes. No. That looks like they gave you.
They sent a copy for each board member.
Do you guys want those?
No.
No.
Yeah, you're having a terrible time.
Well, I was wondering why there was so many copies here. That's for speed reading, there you go, alright.
But thank them anyway.
The next is corrugated metal pipe from Trudeau Steel.
Trudeau? Trudeau, okay.
Our salesman is in the back room, Dave Stangster.
Dave.
Trudeau is out of here on?
Yes.
Sorry.
What is this for again, I'm sorry, corrugated metal?
Corr- corrugated metal pipe, the eighteen inch.
And are they out of?
Hereon.
Yep.
I haven't moved.
Okay. The eighteen inch sixteen gauge is seventeen twenty-five per foot. You should have had Dave come up and read these to me. The twenty-four inch is twenty-one dollars and eighty-five cents per foot. The thirty-inch is twenty-seven dollars and sixty cents per foot.
There's not a thirty-six inch?
Oh, sorry. The thirty-six inch is thirty-three dollars and thirty-five cents. I'm sorry, say it again, thirty-three dollars and thirty-five cents. Okay. The five by one. Fourteen gauge sixty-inch is seventy-one thirty-nine. The seventy-two is eighty-seven twelve. The ninety-six twelve gauge is one fifty-seven thirty. And the hundred and eight is one seventy-six sixty-six. And the arched. Sixty-inch. Is one oh eight fifty-four. The seventy-two is one twenty-nine ninety-eight. And the hundred and eight. Is one ninety-five sixty-four.
What are these prices compared to last year's prices?
Uh, they're a little bit higher.
Sorry.
Um, seemed to me, the.
Some have been up and some have been down. From what I have, that went down, five by one corrugation. It was the only one that went down of the four. Of this bunch, of the first ones that we did, there were some up and some down. It might be a separate invoice.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Yep.
Lumber everywhere is up.
Yeah. One good thing, we don't use a lot of this, so. Okay. This is also Trudeau Steel for the bridge lumber. And it looks like for the plank, it's three thousand eighty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Three thousand eighty-six sixty-seven, yes.
Is that a full load or part load?
No, it should be a part load, I do believe. Yes. The next is diesel. Yes.
There were no bids for the other two on the bridge lumber?
I did not see anything.
I mean, on that, on that for the?
No.
Okay.
No, that was just the the bridge blank, so, yep. Okay, the first one is Coal Petroleum, they're out of Madison, Justin Cole is here. Sitting in the, off to the right.
That's Madison, South Florida, right?
Yes, Madison, South Dakota. Okay. Number two. Is two dollars and two cents.
That's in Watertown?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. In the outshops, it's eight cents more, so it'd be two dollars and ten cents. And number one is two dollars and twenty-five cents to Watertown.
What kind of quantity do we have to buy to get to a price?
We usually buy six thousand gallons at a time. And how many gallons did we buy this year or last year, right off the top of your head?
Um, I think it was real close to, uh, so what you guys have. I didn't look exactly.
Yeah, and I I should have looked, but I did not. So the outside shops, there'd be eight cents to that. Okay, the second bid is from Sioux Valley Co-op here in town.
So you got that exact number for the?
For this, was there a diesel, an outshop diesel place for number one?
For the record, so we know it's two dollars and thirty-three cents, okay.
Oh, I forgot, he had done Gasol.
Two thirty-three?
Yeah.
Okay, yep.
For the E-ten, sorry about that, I'm moving on. Coal Petroleum's bid for E-ten was two dollars and twenty cents per gallon. Okay, Sioux Valley. Okay, they have. For the Ruby Field Master, they have two dollars and ten cents.
What is that?
That's their their brand of, for diesel fuel.
It was one or two.
Number two, yes.
What was that number again?
Two dollars and ten cents. And then they also have. Uh, number two. Shafers. At two dollars and three cents.
What was that, huh?
They have number two dyed shafers premium.
Oh, okay, that's just two different styles of diesel fuel.
Yes. And that was two dollars and three cents. Let's. And the outside shop. Was two dollars and twenty cents.
For either one of those types or?
And then the shafers was two dollars and thirteen.
That bid for number one?
They didn't lock.
Number one for their shafers was two dollars and thirty-seven cents. That was number one dyed shafers premium additive. And then the outside shop was two dollars and fifty-two cents for the number one.
Shafers?
Yes. And then for E-ten. Was two dollars and fifteen cents per gallon. And he has, for E-thirty was one dollar and ninety cents. And for E-eighty-five was a dollar sixty-seven. Okay, take care of that. Next, we have liquid asphalt. First bidder is Jibril, they're from Sioux City, Iowa. And their salesman is also in the audience. Okay, their MC seventy. Is eight hundred, two dollars and eighty-five cents per ton.
Say it again, eight hundred?
Eight hundred two.
Seventy-five.
Eighty-five cents.
Eighty-five.
Okay, and their MC three thousand. Is six hundred seventeen dollars and eighty-five cents. Then the next bid is Flint Hills. They are out of Marshall. Minnesota. And there, they only bid the MC three thousand. Their bid is five hundred ninety-one dollars and seventeen cents. P-Rock. We have Northern Conag, which is north of town up by Myron's House. And the P-Rock, looks like it's six dollars per ton. And we have a bid from Dunick. Here in Watertown. And that looks like it is fourteen dollars and eighty cents per ton.
That's what it's email.
Yep, fourteen eighty, what?
Fourteen dollars and eighty cents. Okay. Brownell Crushing. We have Brownley Construction, Roy is in the audience also. We have Brownlee Construction, Roy is in the audience also. Okay. For the half inch. Is three dollars and two cents. Five eights is two dollars sixty-four cents. And the three-quarter is two dollars and twenty-four cents. We have one from Rogue Excavating. Gant, Minnesota.
How do you spell Rogue?
R-O-G-G-E. And their half inch. Is two dollars and ninety-five cents. Their five eights. Is two dollars and fifty-five cents. And their three-quarters is two dollars and fifteen cents.
Two fifteen, right?
Can we use them in the past?
What's that?
Have we used them in the past?
Not as far as I can remember, I.
I never remember that name.
I don't remember the name. Hey, I asked. Oh, missed one on our, sorry about that, on the. Oh, sorry, that's asphalt patching, sorry. And this is Batuminous out of Ortonville. And this is their hot mix. The first one. Is FOB out of Odessa, it's sixty-two dollars a ton.
So that's not delivered.
No, and then the second one is high-performance patch mix. It's Omega Mix, and that's a hundred and thirty-five dollars per ton.
Same company?
Yes. Those are both types of hot mix, yes. Cause they. Your Omega was a cold mix?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, that's that sixty-two.
Nope, the Omega was a hundred and thirty-five.
Okay.
That's the cold mix.
Yep, I was mistaken. Okay, and the second one is from Dunick's here in town. And their hot mix. Is sixty-seven fifty. And the cold mix. Is one fifty per ton. And that should be it. And I'll have to, like the box culvers for Tara, for Tara. I'm gonna go back and go through that because something does not look right on the price for that. Yeah, there's a lot of difference there, and I may, may have gotten in the wrong place for that.
We have some of the suppliers here, and I got patching material on, we had trouble. Getting it last year. Was it the hot, was it the hot patch, what was it that we had, we were?
Well, they were just so booked up.
Is that the reason, they were just booked up for the availability was not?
Yeah. Yeah, because I think Batuminous is the one that finally did the patches on Wind Tower Roads. They hired them, so I'm gonna go in the back and see if I can.
So last year, there was a motion made to delay awarding the bids for one week to allow you to look over everything. Send something you wanna do, or are you ready, prepared to?
I'd like to go through if I can, so like I said, this, something doesn't look right on that.
I mean, do you wanna wait until next Tuesday?
Yes.
Do you want to delay it, all right?
All right.
Make a motion to postpone.
Second by Waterman. Any other discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, post, all right, well. Take it up next week then.
Yep.
Those of you that have driven down here for this, we appreciate your time and thank you for coming.
I'm not sure who supplied us with the roles, I don't know if I wanna know, but thank you whoever did that, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
No, that's why.
You can't eat them till next week.
All right, yeah. Um, now we will move on to the weed.
Put them in the microwave.
Chemicals. So. Oh, sorry.
Lot of excitement in this.
I can do it.
I know, but every year I do this too. Every year.
I'm not handing it.
You're a child.
Well, it looks like to me that only bid this year was from Van Dees, I'll move that here a little bit, so it's out of the road, it's in me.
Let's make it easy.
Um, from Van Dees Chemical, um, they're stationed basically out of Webster City, Iowa, but there's a sales rep. Here in this region, and we usually get now our supply from Granite Falls, Minnesota, we call in, and usually the following day, it's already here, so. Um, we'll start out right away, Rodeo. Our equivalent, which is basically it's a aquatic glyphosate. Um, Trexol. Thirteen eighty-three per gallon, that is in two and a half gallons. Roundup, just plain glyphosate, bear. Twelve dollars and fifty cents a gallon. Plateau. It's a BASF, B-A-S-F product, one hundred and three dollars and ninety-nine cents per gallon. There's also a generic, which is panoramic. At ninety-eight dollars and ninety-nine cents. Two four D amine. The Van Dees Company Supply. Nine dollars and twenty-one cents per gallon, that is in two hundred and fifty gallon tote.
And what was that number again, nine?
Nine twenty-one. Yep. Two forty Esther. Um, that's. Is a. At, is a Van Dees supply at twelve dollars and twenty-one cents. Tordon twenty-two K, Corteva product. Forty-three ninety-eight. Gray's on next. Corteva product. Forty-seven ten. Non-ionic surfactant. Brewer ninety-ten for ten dollars and thirty-nine cents. Also, they have a premier ninety. At twenty dollars and sixty-two cents.
Need to make a motion to accept those, since there's only one.
Yeah.
Such your.
Yep, that would be my recommendation.
Motion by Van Dees, second by Gable, any further discussion, question?
For those somewhat close to what they were last year?
Yeah.
Exactly the same word last.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep. Um, I will probably come back sometime, we had, probably in another week, so for, you know, so I can put what the cost for the county, for the, for the townships. Yep. Usually, we don't have any extra cost for, for townships, usually what it is on the bid prices. Um, also to. Sorry, yep.
All right, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries, okay.
Um, I have to also addition one to the report, the camp ground, the camp spot reserve site was put up live yesterday, so. If anybody wants to make reservations, I noticed I have to, don't ask her to move the button to a different spot in a little bit larger, so they can actually see. See it, and it's down right now into the, into the area where the, all the rules and regulations are, so it's a little bit harder.
What's the website?
It's the Memorial Park, the Cunningham County website, yep.
Did we do a surcharge for online?
Yes, there's a two-dollar surcharge online, I'll come back to you, because I'm looking at putting the surcharge for in-house, trying to. Promote more online, and it'd be a little higher charge than the online charge, just to promote people to book more online, it takes a lot of time up. In the office, they'll spend fifteen, twenty minutes or more on a call-in, it's the way, because they're asking for this, asking for that, so.
Since we've shared, got the surcharge on the call-ins and.
I know, but there is, that's the, the charge for the call-in, that is what the company gets, that two-dollar charge, that is their cost. Or that's. For the reservation system, that is, that is basically, it just turns over to them.
It's pretty nice looking. Booking.
Yeah, um, once this spring, it's a bad, they're gonna come out, they're gonna take pictures of all the campsites, and that'll be put on where they're gonna make reservations on the map. And then at that time, we'll probably have them do an overall picture of what to put on, on our, on that site, right now, that's their generic one, and I made a comment, you know, it's kind of. How ironic that picture kind of looks similar to some of the areas, in a little bit in the park, a little bit, you know, especially when you go up in the tree lane, what we call. The way how, how it kinda looks, so, all right.
Might even be nice to put a satellite view map on there.
That would be, yeah, you know, something, I should get somebody to get with a drone and take a picture, and have a shot, and that, that virtual, kind of, yep, all right.
All right, thank you, Steve. Now we will move on to item number eight, action to authorize the chair to sign SLA Emergency Management Performance COVID-nineteen Supplemental Grant Agreement, and would that be Jamie? Who's here today? Good morning, Jamie.
Good morning. This is actually something we applied for back in October or November, I believe, it's a supplement. Federal money that the state allocated before us, local jurisdictions and county emergency management, it's a fifty-fifty matching grant. For some upgrade, and what we're using this for is really to upgrade a bunch of stuff in our EOC, to bring up to par technology-wise. Um, so this will be a fifty-fifty, and I think a couple of weeks ago, you granted me, they're gonna have around two of this as well, so. I'll make a motion to authorize the chair to sign this.
Second.
Motion by Gable, second by Waterman, any other questions or comments for Jamie? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that amount of forty-five thirty-four, right? Correct. You bet, thank you.
All right, then we will move on to item number nine, action to approve an amendment to the twenty-twenty program service contract between Cunningham County and South Dakota, South Dakota Housing Association. Good morning, Carrie, well, let us fill us in.
So this is the one that expired at the end of December of last year, so this is the twenty-twenty CARES funding, that they did extend until December of this year, thirty-first of this year. So they just amended it, everything kind of stays the same, we still get the, the admin key remitted. And so this is just, just an amended contract, saying that we're still a sub-recipient, I did send it over to Tom Byrne, and asked him to look it over, and then I did ask him about who signed it. And his response back to me was, everything looks good, so I didn't have, I haven't gotten a new one with, with having used, you know, because he said, everything is fine, so I'm assuming that Myron, you can go ahead and sign it, or do you want me to have?
I think it should be the chair, I mean, that's typical when we do an agreement, but outside with the county, that's, that's one.
So I will go ahead and. Uh, have her change that, I did send her a message, I just hadn't gotten it back yet, um, so.
And that is the, the CARES funding where the rent, or no, the, the mortgages are still included on that, we had some money left, and then.
Absolutely, or anybody that doesn't fall under that eighty percent, um, annual median income, yeah, we'll go into that one, just to kind of give you a quick update, Cunningham County's had thirty-one applications. Nineteen of them is what I've been processing, um, I actually approved eight, denied one, and ten are in process, and two of those will come out of the last year's funding.
Okay.
Um, because they're both mortgages, or one's mortgage and one, she didn't qualify, she was like a hundred and fifty dollars over the eighty percent, so. Um, so yeah, so that's what that's one is, so I will go ahead and get that changed, and then bring it to the sign.
Sorry. So. So then, do we?
We need a motion.
Take a motion to take action on this, and then whenever it gets here, then I can sign it, so.
So I'll make a motion to authorize the chair to sign this.
And this is the twenty-twenty.
Second.
All right, motion by Gable, second by Van Dees, and any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. And the next one, we're gonna have to postpone, they haven't sent out the new contract, I figured if I did put it on there, I would get them, and then if I did put it on there, I would, so.
Right.
Um, she said we had a conference call on Thursday, and she said that they're still working on them, they just wanna make sure that, you know, all the, the language is correct, and it's basically gonna be the same. Um, so I just wanted to bring it to your attention that, you know, I am working on the new ones, um, because I thought, you know, that was, you know, we kind of gave them our word that we were gonna do it, so. Um, so as soon as we get that, and they were okay with that, um, and, so nothing will change really, it's just different funding, more money is available in that one. Um, and we'll still get the, the fifty-dollar admin fee. Um, and we'll still get the, the fifty dollar admin fee, um, and everything stays the same, basically, just says that we're sub recipients.
Right.
Uh, for the new one, so as soon as I do get that one, she was hoping to have them out by last week, uh, but her legal, the legal department is still working on them, just to make sure that every, all the. The terms and everything are set up, because there is a little few different rules, guidelines for this, for this program.
All right, so we'll just leave it on the agenda then for.
Yeah.
Till it comes.
Yeah, I'll just have to, I'll let you know if we win, when I do have those contracts, so, do you want me just keep carrying it over, or do you want to wait until you actually know?
If we just leave it on there, I don't know, does, I suppose it's.
Does it matter? I mean, okay, okay, because hopefully it'll be soon.
Yeah, that way we'll be able to address it when it comes.
Yeah, so I'll just email you when I get the one with the name change on it, and I'll.
Yeah, and Cindy, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
All right, item number eleven, action to approve claims for payment.
No claims today.
All right, nothing for, how about twelve, any COVID practices, procedures? Nothing that we can think of?
Nope.
Uh, item number thirteen, action to approve automatic budget supplements.
Uh, nothing for thirteen or fourteen.
All right, and we have a few travel requests.
The first two travel requests are for two employees in the treasurer's office to attend the new officials workshop scheduled, um, in March. And then Steve Mullengraft's request to attend the South Dakota Week Mission Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
By Van Dees, second by Waterman, any other discussion?
Was there a change that, on the date that, that Steve mentioned?
Yeah. Earlier, and there will be, um. Lodging expense and a few extra meals, they changed the, the meeting that was going to be later that day, and then when most of them were going to come tonight before they changed.
So that, so that one's gonna start a deal earlier.
Yeah, it'll leave, uh, Thursday afternoon, and then. Right, uh, time to come back. Probably about that same, so, anyway. Any other?
So do I need to amend my motion to reflect those changes, or?
No, I don't list, um.
Not dates, so.
I don't list dates.
He'll just get an updated one in, I'll sign or whatever, so. All right, any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries, public notices. I jotted it down about, you probably have the specifics on that Cracker Barrel now for sure, Troy, right?
Yeah, I do, give me just a second there to pull it up. Uh, Saturday, February twentieth, at one P M, Lake Area Tech.
Yeah, they changed it to wine.
Yeah, it's coming up on Saturday. One P M, Lake Area, yep.
All right, I don't know, we don't know of any other ones at this time, but we'll leave it on.
Watertown Area Home Builders Association will be hosting one, too, but I don't have the date and time on that one.
All right, any other possible forms? Any old business? Any new business?
Just, I'm sure just a couple of things on the, so for the, we, we've been talking about the Behavioral Health and Justice Working Group, and, you know, I, one of the I cap representatives. One of their jobs in the welfare offices to set up the systems of care, so that meeting is scheduled for the fourth of March. Um, I think most of the people are gonna be on Zoom, we'll have some people in here, too, so that's fourth of March at noon, so I sent, I C C'd the, the press on the email. Um, so if they wanted to, to watch, they're welcome to do so, but, so then, big discussion items are gonna be done. The systems of care, kind of figuring that out, and then, um. The Police Department has a, a bit of an update for us, they, they heard a mental health officer, so we'll hear about that, and then also H S A has some, some news for us, too, so those are the three main agenda items.
Very good. I might, uh, I'm just going to mention, they are doing the Naco ledge conference virtually, the cost is reduced to two hundred and seventy five dollars. Um, I'm still considering, I guess, to, um, since I said on the steering committee to participate in it, it's gonna look a little different, it's gonna run from March eighth to the twenty sixth, so. Not quite sure how that is all going to work, but just thought I'd bring you up to speed on that.
So it's two seventy five for one of us to join in, okay?
Yeah, yeah, but since I said on the steering committee, we'll ha, we'll still have those committee meetings and go over the resolutions and stuff, so, it's just gonna be. Kind of different, but, anyway, anyone have any opposition to that?
Seems like a good deal, actually.
So, all right, um, any, then we will move on to the open, I believe we did not get any calls. For that, anyone else have anything for the open? All right, do we have any reason to enter an executive session? Have any, anybody else have any reason?
Looks at Natalie.
All right, then I think we're ready, we're ready to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Johnson, second by Van Dees, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, we are adjourned, thanks everyone.
Natalie, can you, can you unmute it? Natalie.